Good evening, welcome to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today is Tuesday, November ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Tonight, we here in the room, we have three school committee members, myself, Jeff Swett, and April Rossi, Kevin Brizali is joining us remotely, and Mary Morgan is unable to join us tonight. So we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV, and a recording is being made by Jamie Wickston. We're going to start this evening, Kevin is going to lead us in a moment of silence.
Hi, thank you. I would like to recognize two Wareham educators who passed away recently. The first is Mr. Jack Stinson. Jack taught history and English at Wareham High School from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and four, and also served as a paraprofessional when he came back from two thousand and six to two thousand and nine. He coached a boys varsity tennis team, and was a fixture and a great fan of Wareham Athletics. The second individual is Mr. Lance Hollitt. Lance was a longtime special educator. He was also a health teacher at Wareham High School before retiring in two thousand and twelve. Lance coached girls softball, was an assistant basketball, track, and football coach as well. So if we could please have a moment of silence for these Wareham educators, good guys, and colorful characters. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. The first item on the agenda is public participation. Is there anyone here who would like to address the committee? I don't believe there is. So we will move on to good news. Does anyone have any good news they'd like to share? April?
The boys' football team is having a slightly extended season. They had a game Friday night, which they won, and they played Cape Tech, and they have an away game on Thursday at Monomoy in Harwich at one o'clock. I know that some of the instances, they've had a little bit of a fan bus, but if people are able to support them, I believe this will be the last game before Thanksgiving. And it looks like a lot of the sports teams have had such great participation from all the students supporting each other, which has been so awesome to see this year.
Great, thanks. Jeff?
I would just like to add to what April said. I observed primarily volleyball and girls volleyball, and that's the only, yes, not volleyball and girls soccer. And I know there's a lot of thought being given to the conference and competitiveness, et cetera, but I observed great effort and great sportsmanship whenever they played, and I think it's a credit to the high school.
Thank you. I just want to say a thank you to voters at town meeting, who, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago now, supported the purchase of school buses for the district, and also a couple of capital improvements for our buildings. So we always appreciate that support from the town and from the voters at town meeting. Next on the agenda is a report from our student representative, who is not able to be here tonight, so we'll look forward to her report next time. Then we have minutes of the meeting from September ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Does anyone have any questions or additions to those minutes? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay. With Kevin being remote, we're going to do roll call votes. So Kevin?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Yes.
Okay, four zero zero, thank you. And next on the agenda is the annual school and district action plan report. Dr. Schwab. Dr. Shaverhood, did you want to say something?
Yes.
Okay.
Get set up.
I'm going to say something after you, so then we'll move. Yeah.
So tonight, you're going to see our action plan, our strategic plan, it's our roadmap, it is our game plan as we move the district forward. I would like to thank Dr. Schwab, the principals, and everybody that worked together in prioritizing the next five years for our district. So, thank you.
Good evening. Before I begin the presentation, I would like to first say that I obviously am very excited to be here with my esteemed colleagues to share our annual plans. Last year, thirty-six community members, faculty, department chairs, principals, assistant principals, finance committee, selectmen, parents, community members, and the Wareham High School Student Council joined together to create WPS two thousand twenty-six. The committee approved our new strategic plan on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. Prior to this presentation, I met again with the Wareham High School Student Council on two occasions. Our first meeting, I shared the school's chosen priorities and the student results from the school quality measure from last year. I followed up two weeks later to answer questions and listen to their thoughts. With a new motto, "Our Future Begins Here," and the WPS learning model that addresses continued growth, we are here tonight to share our priorities. The leadership team met in August to analyze data from many sources, all made available in your packet. Your packet contains some of the information shared tonight, but also includes the data provided and analyzed by each leadership team, professional staff survey, academic survey with MCAS and district-wide assessments, grades, attendance, discipline, and the school quality measure results. Through this analysis, priorities were identified that will be the focus of our school and district this year. We will measure success with a collection of data at the close of the school year and meet with the leadership team replicating this process. Through this process, and with continued help from all stakeholders, we will fulfill the WPS two thousand twenty-six promises. Those presenting tonight are Ms. Bethany Chandler, Ms. Joan Siemens, Ms. Tracy Cote, Mr. Scott Palladino, and Ms. Bonnie LaSorza. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you.
Seems familiar. So here's our motto. We have art teachers now working with our students in the schools to develop our logo. They're actually doing lessons on marketing and different ways in which to create logos. We anticipate a vote on the winning logo, hopefully with a student signature underneath that logo mid-year at some point. It's our learning model, which we will be working on now. You're familiar with that. I'll put it in many documents, so that it becomes sort of second nature, hopefully to people as we move through. And our vision and vision of a graduate. Wareham Public Schools' promise is to provide opportunities for all to discover the greatest versions of themselves by acquiring knowledge, wisdom, and skills to explore, formulate, realize, and reflect. We will think critically, communicate, and persevere with tenacity and trust. We will continue to learn all that is essential to live our best lives and positively impact the community and the world. The stakeholders involved in this school process of creating goals include faculty, staff, school council, and the Wareham High School Student Council. The data was collected, I listed it here. This will be posted online, too, so that families will be able to see the process and know that it's very transparent. And our first promise, we promise to implement best teaching practices and use high-quality instructional resources with embedded technology to empower student voice, include experiences and assessments that are authentic and standard-based, so that students become thoughtful learners that persevere, focus on individual goals, and become productive members of our school, our society, local and global community. So the data that drove the decisions that the leadership team made is included here on this slide. And I wanted to, the school quality measure, it's a very important survey that we have implemented last year for the first year. And the reason why that it's very important is because it was developed by university. The university developed the survey, and they vetted properly, so that the results that we can gather from the information are valid. A survey, just giving a survey, is not really a valid way to gather information. So what makes this work is there are many questions underneath each scale, which then gives us a better idea of where people land on that particular scale. And this is a tough process, but I'm trying very hard to actually connect theory, which happens at universities, with practice, which happens in our day-to-day lives. So what I tried to do here was to see where we need to improve on the survey, and then connect those questions that were asked underneath each of those scales, so that we can target certain goals and priorities as we move ahead. So Wareham Elementary School.
Good evening. I'm Bethany Chandler. I am going to be presenting Priority One and Priority Two. For scholarship student learning for Wareham Elementary School, we have two major priorities, student voice and choice. Students will be actively engaged in learning lessons that promote and give value to individual student voices, interests, and choices, making predominantly student-centered lessons that really give children the opportunity to express themselves in meaningful ways and understand why they are in school and what they're doing every day. Depth and breadth, students will explore and create experiential, standard-based projects in a democratic manner, reflecting how they made a connection, solved, and investigated real-world situation. I think it's important, too, for our young learners and growing on, that they understand why they're in school and how that connects to the real-world application, and how they can become very successful adults in doing so.
You're up, Tracy.
All right. Hello, Tracy Cote. So for Wareham Middle School, school choice and voice really has been a priority the last couple of years. We've included that this year because we feel it's extremely important. We have built voice and choice into the curriculum areas, with teachers and students all having a choice and a voice. At WMS, staff have a lot of input. We don't have a top-down model. We have a model where we're all making decisions together. I often gather anonymous feedback from staff. We often have feedback in front of each other as well. We're not always going to agree, but we do come to a consensus for what's best for our students. We've created teaching teams this year. We brought those back. We haven't had them in a while in all grade levels, so that staff can work on building strong relationships. We've added common planning time, so that staff can collaborate on whole-school needs, as well as grade level and individual needs. Modern learning, we have created project-based assessments. Those really were formulated last year. This year, we're implementing them. It's pretty exciting to see the implementation of them. Sixth-grade math just implemented a project-based assessment where students had to write a letter to the principal about why they should be allowed to go to an amusement park, and they had to calculate prices and units, and it was a culmination project. They had choices within that. It was exciting to see the end products with that. We've also begun to create new project-based assessments. So at this point, we have project-based assessments in every grade and every subject, and we're on to our second assessments. Depth and breadth, we are implementing and expanding on contentary initiatives such as SAVIS, Social Studies, SAVIS Explore, and McGraw-Hill Study Sync, using Viking blocks to navigate individual strengths and intervene on students' academic and cultural opportunities. A lot of our new programs also have diverse and cultural opportunities which are embedded into those curriculums.
Scott Palladino, Wareham High School Principal. For student voice and choice, as Tracy mentioned, this has been a theme for many years, and we're going to continue with that theme, which is great, to allow students to have some choice, whether it be choice in assessment, choice in classes that they want to take, choice in some curriculum, it's all going to be there. Our big push this year is to pilot the NYPD personal project, and this is really exciting for students in the tenth grade. This is going to give students an opportunity to create a personal project that's of high interest for them, and it's also going to allow them to really go through the various stages to get that to a point where they're ready to present that project in the spring. We're doing that with roughly three advisory classes this year in anticipation, and we'll be announcing in the spring when we're ready to have that presentation. We hope you all might have the opportunity. Hopefully, we can have it inside, but if not inside, we'll be on the sidewalk to the high school, but we'll have that information out, I'm sure, sometime after New Year's. We're continuing to enhance the online courses that are available to our students. We feel the online courses not only allow students to select courses that are of high interest that we may not be able to offer at Wareham High School, because they may only be the interest of one student, but this gives our students an opportunity to take courses of high interest, and it also gives them the opportunity to use the online platform, which we feel is very important as they transition into post-high-school experiences in college. So it's a great opportunity. Every year, as you've seen, we come to you with a course of studies, and there are always added online courses that are available. Pretty much, you can, any course you could imagine, we have access to, whether it's through Agenuity or Virtual High School, but we use both platforms, and our students have benefited from that for many years now. Moving on to modern learning, we are continuing with our NYPD curriculum units, and we have a new advisory schedule that was created through our scheduling committee. And basically, what we're looking to do is for two days a week, we're looking, starting term two now, we're looking to use that timeframe for students to have the opportunity to meet with teachers and use it as an enrichment opportunity. So similar to middle school's kind of Viking block, this is a similar program that we're going to have on Tuesdays and Wednesdays for our high school students. Many of our high school students have trouble staying after school and have transportation issues, so this gives them an opportunity for support, enrichment during that time, and we have an app where they sign up, and it's going to be, I think, a great addition to our advisory schedule and setup. Thank you.
And the district offered professional development and modern teacher in August, as well as in high-quality performance-based assessment professional development. We will continue with professional development to enhance our teachers' ability to effectively differentiate using modern technology and practices throughout the course of this school year. So we're very excited about that and the outcome of that project. Social-emotional learning, we promise that social-emotional awareness is recognized and taught, so that students and staff will gain the confidence to positively influence the decisions they make. The data that we collected and looked at to see where we were, there was a sense of belonging scale that was a peak to us, peaked some interest in us in some of our schools. Our students necessarily always feel that they belong, teacher interest in students was also an interesting scale, and emotional safety was something that we need to focus in on at our schools. Attendance discipline and referral data will continue to be looked at as we move ahead. And it was a COVID school year, just to let you all know, so the data we have now is a result of students having, what, nine first days last year, as we learned earlier this afternoon, or this morning. But the data we have is the data that we have. We're going to use that as our foundation as we begin to look more closely at these elements and move ahead. So just keep that in your mind. It was a very different school year than what we're facing now, which is even different than what we had two years ago. And these are the questions. So you can go back and look at the PowerPoint, you all have it, to look at the questions that are underneath each of those scales. They're, I think, weighty, and they give us a lot to look at when we're making decisions and our goals. So Bethany, you're doing number two?
Okay, yes, I am. I am ready to go. For social-emotional learning at the Wareham Elementary School, students will have the opportunity to learn lessons from Castles. Castles is a website that is rich with information, resources, and research on social-emotional learning. It is linked with Yale University and Professor, Dr. or Dr. Professor, Mark Brackett, who also does ruler for social-emotional learning and regulation of our moods. So we've done some professional development with that. We want to continue with that from both of those research platforms, so we will use those. And support staff that can assist teachers in providing these opportunities for students. We have formed and met for the first time our social-emotional learning committee that is formed, which will meet monthly, at least, to bring about resources, provide opportunities in class, and through professional development on social-emotional learning in class to support students, staff, and our administration team, sometimes. We'll collaborate with staff and develop a new charter. So a charter is what your belief system is within your school, in your classroom, so it is your goals. And so it's self-developed with other teachers to build of what our promises are in a classroom, what our promises are in a school. So we'll be working on redeveloping our charters and implementing, going back to looking at some of the work from responsive classroom to build classroom community. I also am hoping that for the first time, we're going to look at self-portraits and building portrait of selves, and have students be able to look at themselves as learners in kindergarten, and who they are in first grade, and hopefully carry that portrait with them as learners as they go through the years in Wareham of who they believe to be as learners.
Okay. At Wareham Middle School, for a couple of years now, you've seen that we believe in creating an environment of belonging where everyone feels safe, valued, and competent. And we've been building on that each year, continuing to do that process. Last year, with the pandemic, PBIS looked very different, and I think my team that works on that did a great job with incorporating a lot of PBIS with remote learning and with hybrid learning. So now we're back on the path where we were a year and a half ago. We feel that our Tier One is in good shape, and we're going to continue with those things that we've done well. Tier Two was begun before the pandemic, but last year, we were lucky enough to have trainings by Poly Bath. And so we're taking those trainings and using that with Tier Two, some in the classroom, some outside the classroom. Tier Three, we are working on providing counseling, behavior plans, counselors pushing lessons, and wraparound support for families, and we have an additional social worker that's helping us on a lot of the family wraparound services. Professional learning community for PBIS is huge for us at the middle school and really helps to build the student initiatives that we're working on. We've also expanded our Student Support Council, we call it SSC, to provide targeted SEL strategies for individual students and families in need.
For the high school, we've also been blessed to have additional social workers, very timely, with a large percent of our students that were not in school last year and had to come back and re-acclimate to the high school setting. So that's been a tremendous support for our students and our staff. We had implemented a new guidance curriculum with lessons towards post-high-school planning, and also supporting kind of the students in the middle. These are the students that really haven't had a lot of supports, and it's a tremendous opportunity for us to really support those students. They've kind of been, you know, the students with IEPs have their support, students with the advanced courses don't really need a lot of support, so really focusing through the curriculum and through the guidance department on these students that are kind of in the middle, that really, some of them are spinning their wheels and need that added layer of support. We have focused TLC counselors for our therapeutic learning community and various resources to support those students as well. And this year, once again, we're really adding stronger ties with our AMP program. Our AMP program is kind of a pre-referral program for students that receive weekly counseling through High Point. So we're blessed to have that grant once again this year, where we have a counselor that works with students for up to six weeks, and then if they need further counseling, they would get into the weekly counseling through High Point, and both are at no cost to the district, so it's a huge benefit for us. Thank you.
The district has provided a way through grants funding, actually, to create a committee. There are six teachers from the high school, seven from elementary school, six teachers from the middle school, sorry, four teachers from the high school, who have all elected to join this committee. We had our first meeting November fourth, our kickoff meeting, with both the modern teacher professional development group, as well as the social-emotional learning group. And we're very excited about what will occur with it. The posting was different than other postings. We put the learning model on there and our vision, and said, this is where we're heading, we need some help, and hopefully, we had a lot of action on this committee. So it's very exciting, and we'll see where we land. We're going to assess where we are, what we do well, and what else we can do. So promise number three, community college career and life inspired. We promise that students will have greater exposure to a variety of opportunities and will be prepared to make impactful life choices as they progress. The scale is from the school quality measure, civic participation scale. The teacher response that was concerning was the family-school relations. So I think that's an area that we need to pay attention to. We've always needed to pay attention to that. That is not new news. So I think there've been a million ways in which we've tried to address it, and we just have to keep trying. So these, again, are the questions asked underneath that particular scale. How involved are parents? How often do you connect with parents? How involved have parents been with parent groups? How often does the average parent help out at your school? And I would say, with the pandemic, that was not necessarily an easy answer last year, so some of the data is, we can use, but I'm curious to see what happens now that, well, even now, we can't have visitors. So it changed, it's a little bit different, just getting the answer to some of these questions that I think we would have done well at the lower elementary, for example, where we do, where we used to have a lot of parent volunteers, but haven't been able to do that because of the pandemic. So we'll see how it goes, but we will continue to work in this area regardless. So Joan, are you?
Yeah, so I'm doing Priorities Three and Four. Joan Siemens, principal of mine at Forest School. So we're looking at incorporating literacy experiences that will show those real-world connections for our students. We're working with the district care program. We want to build those relationships with the businesses that we have already established and to expand upon that. One of the new programs that we have this year in Unified Arts is the STEAM program. We were very fortunate to hire two wonderful teachers who are doing an awesome job. I've been able to observe both of them, and they're both amazing. We also are looking at, as I said, those connections with community. So Buzzards Bay Coalition, looking at the Lloyd Center. Some of this, as Dr. Schwab mentioned, we have to do virtually. Junior Achievement, we were able to do last year virtually. They do great programs with our kids as far as financial literacy and getting them ready for, you know, the life that they have coming up. We've done Miss Money virtually. We've done presentations pre-pandemic. We did it virtually last year, where students learned about saving money instead of spending it all the time. So these are the connections that we really want to give our students, so that they can carry on as they go forth. And then, of course, with our local fire department, police department. We love seeing the police officers coming through all of our schools. The students are always waving to the officers that come through. The fire department has been great. One day, they came just to say hello to the students, and then everybody panicked to we were having a fire drill that day. So, but it was great. We appreciate their support.
Okay. For the middle school, definitely those performance-based assessments are connected to student interest. This year, at the middle school, we're going to have a whole-school March Madness Week. We will have a Career in College Exploration Week tied to March Madness at every grade and every subject, so I will let you know after March how that goes. But the department chairs are very excited about this, so. We're also exploring real-world activities. We're also exploring real-world activities and again tying those to our performance-based assessments. The last one on here says to a set incorporating partnerships that exist outside of the school. The pandemic really put a halt to that, derailed it a little bit. We're hoping to begin to start that up, but it's been very difficult without having visitors and making those connections. So I'm hoping that by the end of the year, we can do that.
For the high school, similar theme. We're really looking for new career exploration opportunities for our TLC program and young adult program. And last year we all took a hit on that, as you've heard. And this year we're really starting to ramp that up. So it's going to be exciting to see the various opportunities our students have in these programs. We're blessed to have transportation, to be able to provide our students access to these various businesses in town. And we've had tremendous support over the years and we anticipate the same level of support. And hopefully we'll find some more locations for our students to have some wonderful opportunities. The career exploration pathways is, I think, going to be a great committee that's starting right now. I'm really excited to see what happens and maybe to even be involved a little bit. I think we have an array of classes and some that we maybe could offer in the future that could allow us to really have more career exploration pathways, more courses tied into this and more opportunities for students to get outside the school and have that real-world experience. Our job coach that we're blessed to have is doing an awesome job. She's got a license to drive students around and we really ramped up her service and allowing her to have access to more students, which provides more opportunities for our students. Our e-portfolio did take a hit during COVID. It was very difficult to do an electronic portfolio. We maintained the status of the e-portfolio, but really getting back to really focusing on that e-portfolio. Having the students present obviously is a huge game changer for us versus trying to work with 25% of the students that are remote on that e-portfolio. Having them every day provides more opportunities for teachers to supplement the portfolio as well. I talked about the NYPD personal project earlier and just the committee that I mentioned, I think is going to be very helpful. And having opportunities for our school to career students. I had a chance to go down and see Beth earlier today to look at some of her equipment. And we doubled up and had a chance to check in on some of our school to career students that are located there. So that was a great opportunity and again, continuing with the school to career program that we have in place for our other students. And right now as we speak and on a P, we have a PTA meeting going on right now and our librarian is actually involved. We all have representatives at that meeting. And one of the agenda items is creating a community resource bank from our community members, which would provide our staff an opportunity to tap into some of these community members to provide resources for real-life learning that ties in obviously with their curriculum. So I'm really excited to hear how that meeting, I think it might be over by now, how it went and, and just to see the response. But we're really hoping to really build up that community resource bank and being able to share it not just with the high school, but with our colleagues in other schools as well. I think it's going to be a great opportunity to really give the kids that big picture that they all want to see. Thank you.
And if I may add, the school to career opportunity is a wonderful one. It provides our young students mentors and looking at older students and they really look up to them. So I really appreciate that and not only that, they're a big help to the teachers in the classroom. So we're very thankful at Wareham Elementary, DeKalb, mine it.
We've advertised for our committee for looking at the, for the high school specifically, using Title IV funds to pay teachers to get together and take a real close look at what we're offering at the Wareham High School through the course catalog and figure out what we need to do to possibly do, you know, courses of ninth and 10th grade that are required courses and then open it up in 11th and 12th to really push the idea of fostering careers that are also in concert with high academic expectations. So it's been a vision since 2014, really. It's been a long time coming, but I think it's a really good time to do that. My biggest fear of public education is that we become not relevant any longer because we, but because we really need to take a look at what we're doing and our practices and figure out how to, how to really create a dynamic, second-to-none opportunity for our students. So this is, will probably begin in January, I hope. And it will actually fall in line with the time that you all approve the course catalog, which will be next January, so to speak. And the goal really to be made, to have one or two pathways possibly defined nicely in that catalog so you can take a look and see how they were created. And we'll have obviously the school involved and other teachers. And so we'll see how that goes and I will keep, we will keep you updated. Professional learning, the district and school leadership teams promise to provide professional development that is rigorous and aligned to supportive effective learning in modern environments so that educators will be able to create a learning path for themselves to support and nurture students that reflect the vision of Wareham Public School graduate. The data that we looked at, teacher leadership scale was one. Effective practice was another, that was student response and support for development and growth, the teacher responses. And we have of course our annual professional staff survey, which is now has six years of data that I had shared with all of you in your packets. But that's just a one question for one issue. Survey and the union likes that survey, so I guess we'll continue to give it and I'll continue to analyze it and we will use it. Of course, we use every piece of data we can to make decisions, but that's where we will gather our information or where it looked at. And here are the questions that you can peruse later on, but they are relevant where we're trying to go. And the grade levels where there were scores, you know, where we were concerned. And Wareham Elementary.
Okay, so we're looking at a professional learning community. And one of the questions that's always on the professional staff survey is collaboration time for teachers. In the last few years, we've taken a hit on that because we haven't been able to provide another planning time where the teachers can get together as a grade level. Well, we've been able to do that this year for both schools. So we know that we're going to see an increase in that question this year. So once a week, teachers are able to get together to plan at the end of the day. So we're very excited about that. They love that. They have some great conversations coming out of those meetings that they're having. We also looking at professional development opportunities to always expand the teacher's knowledge and experience. Another one of the questions always is if, as a leadership team, if we are then reflecting back on the PD that the teachers had to make sure that it was valuable. So the PD that we had in August, we made sure at staff meeting that we went through that. We were looking at the modern teacher, architect, learner center culture. So the teachers were starting that. We worked with modern teacher. And then as a staff, we continue that throughout the year. So this strategic plan is a five-year plan. I know the school action plan is one year, but that's something that we're going to be continuing as we have time with our staff members.
And Wareham Middle School, professional learning, we're always using data to guide our professional development. The data may be feedback from teachers, but it also includes where our students are at. So it can be MCAS data, our benchmark data, classroom performance data and where we need to go with that professional development. So we're going to continue to use the data. We have implemented common planning time that promotes collaboration and interdisciplinary connections. And that is new for the middle school this year during the school day. We're also going to utilize the modern teacher platform. We have four teachers that are participating in the district-wide committee that has been performed, has been formed and they're starting up this month. So we're excited to see what those teachers can glean from the modern teacher platform and then hopefully train the rest of our staff on that.
So for the high school, also the theme of modern teachers there. We provided PD at the beginning of the school year. We'll continue to provide PD. And it's been a really a great asset to our teachers' toolboxes. We have introduced new desktops this year, which is very exciting. These are laptops and in our classroom, teachers are receiving training, not only on the, the new laptops, but we also have interactive boards being mounted in the high school as we speak and should be done next Tuesday. So we're going to be working on making sure they have technology training on, on those devices. It's, it's really exciting because when I started in the high school, it was a new school and we had all the technology. And it's really exciting to see kind of that pendulum shift where we're back in the game. We're back to being, you know, a high-tech high school. So it's really exciting to see that technology in place, to see the teachers' excitement. It's a new tool that they have in their classroom. They're already using them. And we've, we're waiting to get them all mounted before we start the training. So they're jumping in and they're kind of hip-deep into it. Our departmental PD continues. Our, our teachers, as we all have one day a week that we meet with our staff or that the staff meets with the departments and PD is provided there and it's embedded in the, in the year-long schedule. Recently, just last month, we had the All-Cape PD, which is really important for kind of those, those teachers that have small departments or maybe a department of one. The All-Cape PD collaborates with all of these folks and provides them real cutting-edge PD on the Cape. So it's, it's great to be part of that, of that program. Great to be part of the collaborative, who puts that on, Cape Guard Collaborative. District provided PD has been wonderful. You heard about Poly Bath and I'll mention that again in a minute. But just the various trainings that we've had, the various people that we've been able to have come in pre-COVID or come in and Zoom with us has been great. The IB NYPD training for all of our teachers, the MIE training for our AP teachers. We've been able to do a lot of this through Zoom, which I think has really leveled the playing field because sometimes when you have to go to AP training, there's two hours away and you have a young family, it becomes difficult. So this is really, over the last two years, leveled the playing field and allowed for people to, to attend PD that otherwise they may not have been able to attend. So it's been, it's been great. College Board provides various trainings for our staff. Project Lead the Way has been a great program that we've been involved in now for some years. I, I know I've mentioned it before and I'm sorry, I'm going to say it again, but Peer Observations, I think, are the best PD that we have in the district. And being able to have our teachers go in and see various teachers and see what they do. It's just a wonderful, wonderful experience and it costs us nothing. It's phenomenal. It's the best PD out of everything listed here as far as I'm concerned. I'm a little biased. Curriculum collaboration that's been going on last year into this year and just being able to continue to build that curriculum, whether it be the NYPD curriculum or be a new AP course that we're offering this year in psychology. Just having those opportunities and the time is, is obviously very important. Our deans have really taken on the Poly Bath philosophy and thank you Sandy Pong for that. It's been great to have Poly Bath involved in the district. I wish we didn't have the COVID situation last year because Dr. Schwam had a wonderful plan for PD last year with her being in the building. We did the best we could, obviously, virtually, but it was just, it was great. Would have been even better if it wasn't, we weren't in the situation that we were in last year. So that's it for the high school.
And the district, so we did create this committee, also funded through Title I, Title II grants. We have a number of members involved and the kickoff meeting, like I said, was the other day, November 4th. It's just very exciting. We're going to train this cohort of teachers, many from each school. We'll go, we'll learn all of the ins and outs of the platform and being a modern teacher and student voice and define rigor and all of those things that we really need to do. And as a group, then they'll assess where they are, take what's, what works for them, talk to their colleagues and then put a plan. Their goal for that group is to create a professional development plan for the next school year. So there'll be continued collaboration around that. So I'm very excited about that. So digital convergence, which everyone says they don't know what that is, but I insist that it's not that complicated, really. It is to make it happen, but basically it's to make certain that technology is accessible and transparent so that users will be empowered to focus on their individual goals. And we have come a long way since even the beginning of this conversation and I'm very excited about that. And Ms. LaSorsa will come up to speak about that after the principals go through their slides. But this is a very exciting time for us. We're in a tremendous place with what, with the work that we're doing. So Wareham Elementary School.
All right, so one of the new tools that we have to log any issues that we have, whether it's staff or our families, is to use incident IQ. So you can go right to the website, you go right to the form and then you input what your issues are. I've used this several times myself already and the response is quick, efficient. The things are taken care of and then the ticket is closed out. So it's been a nice way and to keep track of the issues that we're having. Hasn't been a lot, but little glitches, glitches here and there. So we're working very closely with our technology department to make sure all of our resources are being used efficiently and effectively. And we're creating tutorials for various people that need to know how to learn things. Terry DeFilippo has done a lot of videos that she created last year. She's put that out for all staff, for all schools. We had a, a long-term substitute who has to learn how to do grades in Power Teacher. So we have a video for that. So she'll be able to access that as well. So we're very grateful for all the support and technology.
Our priority at Wareham Middle School for, for five is really the learning management system and Google Classroom. So Google Classroom became very important to us last year and forced every single person in the building to be proficient. So how do we have a Google Classroom now that we're back in school? And how do we manage that appropriately and still use it effectively with our, with our staff and our students? So that's our goal with that priority.
So for the high school, this next year will be a big year for us as we prepare for our decennial visit in October of 2022. One big piece that we really need to tackle is our vision of the graduate. I think this is a great starting off point, having this program here tonight and, and really making sure that all of our priorities here tonight are covered with our vision of the graduate. So excited to get this kind of approved and then, and then really get focused in the new year on our vision of the graduate and again, in anticipation of our decennial visit. So that's a big piece for us. Our e-portfolio, as I kind of mentioned that a little bit earlier, you know, really making sure we get focused on that. It's, it's a great tool as they conduct their exit interview. And it's really a very rewarding process to go through for the students and the staff as they articulate kind of where they were as a student and they'll show a piece and then they'll compare it to something in their senior year. And to see that growth is very rewarding for all. So it's just going to be a great process and again, and this is something they can keep and many of them build on it in college. So it's, it's pretty exciting. We talked about modern teacher landing pages and just various supports from central office. Go Guardian has been huge for us, not only during the pandemic, but it's been huge for us in the classroom. There's so many pieces to it, the biggest pieces. You have full reign on every student in your classroom, what sites they're on, what they have open, what they've minimized. And you can also provide feedback through Go Guardian. So it's been a great asset. From a district standpoint, students take home laptops. It also kind of polices what they're doing and it gives us control of what we give them access to. Beyond that, we have a penalty box. If a student is abusing the privilege, they go in the penalty box. It's not a hockey analogy. Maybe it is. E-Hall Pass, we rolled out E-Hall Pass this year. We, we had two really big initiatives we wanted to roll out this year and we really felt that it was important to kind of get our foundation underneath us in September. In October, we rolled out E-Hall Pass, which Ms. Rossi, I don't know if you've gotten any feedback from your son on that. But it, it allows us to really monitor who's in the hallway, how often they're in the hallway. If, if Joyce, you and I were meeting at certain times and we did this multiple times, it would send us an alert and we could say when Joyce and Scott ask to use the bathroom, they can't be out at the same time. We get reports, students, how often they're out in a week or a day. So it's really provided us control and that was one of our big concerns when we changed the schedule to a five-day, five-class-per-day schedule. Our concern was it was another opportunity for students to potentially abuse that lab privilege. So it's really worked out well. Our enriching students who are enrolling in November and that, as I previously mentioned, is the opportunities for enrichment for students to do it on two days during advisory. So jury's still out on that. We've tweaked the E-Hall Pass probably about 32 times to make it better every time. And we anticipate, hopefully not 32 times with, with enriching students, but hopefully we'll continue with, from feedback from the students and the staff. We'll continue to make that a very positive experience. And as always, we're always emphasizing school-wide safety. You know, lockdowns and fire drills, they were a little different last- safety, you know, lockdowns and fire drills. They were a little different last year, really getting back to maintaining a safe environment in the school and providing that, which is paramount. If you don't have a safe school, it's very tough to learn. So just kind of that reemphasis of that and really focusing on that. And that's it for the high school.
Polly's coming up.
She's taking my spot.
Well, Ava.
A little transition.
Somebody can stay with me. I'm Bonnie Lasorsa, and I am the Director of Technology. So the district priorities for digital convergence, and I have to say that as a math teacher, I struggle with that vocabulary and have most of the year. For, so we looked at five priorities for this year, and they are, the first one is cybersecurity, and we have a grant through the town that we participate in cybersecurity. It's very, very popular with all of our staff and teachers. Not, not really. But it is, it is important, the cybersecurity training is important because it's part of the requirements for our cybersecurity insurance through the town. So the goal is 80% participation, and on the last training statistics that I got, we're at about 74% for our schools. So I think that that's actually quite high. There's a new grant coming out soon in November. We have looked, spent a lot of time looking at security protocols over the summer, and we have reviewed them and reconfigured them. Incident IQ that you heard about is part of that, as is FileWave, which is, allows us to access all of our Chromebooks remotely and Go Guardian. School lists have all been updated to reflect staff accurately. Employees, staff that have left the district are now suspended on a regular basis, and it's become a procedure. We also had an outside risk assessment completed and attended a cybersecurity summit. We spent part of the summer looking at Google, and we reorganized the way that we assign apps to students. There's been a lot of changes about security, including many, many changes for students that are under 18. The next priority that we looked at was equity, especially with the new school opening. It's really important that all of our teachers have access to the appropriate tools, both hardware and software. Really excited that the interactive displays, the big TVs, are going in at all schools. So they were installed last Friday at the middle school, and they're in the process at the high school. Upgrades to Wi-Fi in the schools and reorganization of the network resources are continuing. All of our teachers receive new laptops at all three schools, all four schools now, all three schools. We're looking at streamlining. We're streamlining our current programs, and we're really looking to see where things are duplicating. And if they are being duplicated, then we're looking at ways to reconfigure it so that we have one. Almost every program that we have, including E-Hall Pass and the Enriching Students, which is starting next week, roster from Power School to Clever to Google Classroom. So Clever and Google Classroom are our rostering, are the ways that we roster all those programs. Incident IQ, which was mentioned at the elementary school level, allows us to not only respond quickly to issues, but also to track problems and look for patterns. For example, with the new laptops, on one morning, we got like seven different comments that the printers weren't working, and they were able to push out the drivers for those, so that there was just an update. And that gives us one place to look for that and to look to see, you know, which schools and which programs. And then the other thing that we're going to really focus on this year is creating clear documentation on not only what we have, but how often it should be renewed and repurchased. Systems, we're really looking at, we had a lot of new students and staff this summer, and reviewing the systems for onboarding and offboarding staff and students to improve efficiency. There's a lot of times where things are, people are doing the same thing at different places. So we're looking at those processes and how they all work. For example, in Power School, there's a new incidents reporting system that we're using, and for the first time since I've been here, every assessment score is in Power School for a teacher. And that's actually Terry DeFilippo, who did that for us. As a teacher, I, you can pull up a student, and you can see every assessment score, FAST, MCAS, NUIA, anything they've taken the entire time they've been in the district, and it's all there in one list. So think about for a special educator, or any teacher, to see that progress. We're working on standardizing some of those reports and creating some graphs and reports to be printed right from Power School. I think that we underutilize what we already own in that arena. And then the last, and probably the most important to me, is professional development. I'm working with the Modern Teacher Professional Learning Committee to talk about what kinds of professional development. We've tried a variety of ways. Ms. DeFilippo has done several, she's great at videos. We've done tutorials, we've put them in Google Classroom, we've tried them in Power School. We have a whole Department of Technology landing page for teachers. I don't think we're yet reaching who we want to reach in the manner that is efficient, that we're reaching all teachers and all staff, or all parents, for that matter. So we're, that's a big priority for me, is to look at how we can get the resources we have and that information out to our teachers and our families. That's probably a little bit later in the strategic plan. And those are mine.
Thank you.
Do we want to stop there and ask for questions, or do you want to keep going?
We're done.
Oh, okay.
No questions, all are great.
Okay, all right. April, go ahead.
So in regards to the technology upgrades, it's, it's great to hear with the interactive boards. Where did the, is that grant-funded? Was that something that we had had budgeted? Or is that the upgrades to that, like, it's a television that's like a touchscreen, or can you explain what it is a little bit more?
Sure. It was grant-funded, and basically, it's like a giant, giant as in 75 inches, Android tablet on the wall. And it serves, so, and we've had a few of them in the district for a while. We have eight, currently, we had eight at Viewsonics at the high school, eight at the middle school, and three at Deccus, and one at Minnet. And it works as a whiteboard, so students can write on them using your finger, like a giant touchpad tablet. But it's also a browser. So, and it was invaluable in classes last year during the pandemic. You could zoom on them, and the students could see what you were writing on it. It takes away the necessity for projectors. It's all right there for you. You can plug your laptop into it, but you actually don't have to do that very often. But the best analogy I have is a giant Android tablet, either on a cart or on the wall.
Very cool. Thank you.
Kevin?
I have a question about kind of the plan overall. First, I'd like to, thank you everyone for your work on this, for the principals. I know it's hard sometimes getting staff together to work on this, and Andrea for overseeing it. But as we look at the plan, and this is year one of the plan, there's a lot in here. I'm hopeful that at some point in the future, maybe in May or June, that we can see where we did against the plan that we've outlined. And I guess what I would add or look for is more specificity or examples. So maybe, like, if this gets reported back to us, I'm thinking, I'm not just thinking out loud here, but maybe we could do something like, were we color coding green elements of the plan that you've listed out, that you just code in green? Yep, we've hit that. This is your examples of how we hit it. Maybe something in yellow, we're not quite there yet, which is okay. Or maybe something in red that, yeah, we haven't got to that because we focused on these other priorities that we've listed out here. Is that the plan going forward, that you'll come back to us at the end of the year to see how we did in year one, which is ambitious, and I applaud you for it? I'd just like to kind of make sure we can, we follow up on it.
Yeah, so the timeline is a little bit different for June, and the reason for that difference is the data that we collect. Because what we'll do next is collect the same data and look at that against the initiatives that we chose in each of the schools to see how we did with the data, and also look at other evidence that we've collected. Performance-based assessments is one thing that's a big deal on our data. How the committees came up with plans, those plans will be evidence as we move ahead. So everything that we can look at for evidence, what we've done in the past, Kevin, and I know you haven't been here, is we do two things at once during our presentation normally, and that is, we report on how we did at the meeting, and then project out on the goals for the following year. We may want to split that into two meetings, which is fine as well, but it's gone, they're a little longer, obviously. But in the past, that's basically what we've done. And COVID sort of, you know, it, it just really messed with us for a number of reasons. Because the prior year, we didn't have MCAS, and we didn't have access to student information. Like, there was just so much that was up in the air. So being able to start again is really where we are. So we're at the beginning of this process, the end of, the beginning of next year, we should, you should, this committee will see where we, how we did, what we accomplished, and where we're heading as a result of that information.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, like, I'm, as an example, like, in elementary, they said that components of responsive classroom are going to be implemented. I would just like to know in the future, okay, what were those elements? That's all.
Exactly.
Not so much a survey on it necessarily, but what, what did we actually put in specifically as an example? That's all, just to make it a little more concrete for us slow learners out here.
No, that's the goal. So thank you, and we will definitely do that.
Thanks.
Okay. Jeff?
On your data results driving goals, you list half a dozen things that are part of your formative and summative assessments. Do you ever, and I'll direct this to the principals as well as yourself, do you ever experience what I'll call cognitive dissonance, which is to say, you look at results from these varied sources, and they just don't make sense. And how do you reconcile? How do you resolve that dissonance?
Do you all want to answer that first, or would you like me to?
So one example I can say, the elementary, or specifically Minnet Forest, we look at the professional staff surveys, and, you know, they're anonymous. So sometimes it's difficult when you're looking at scores that may have gone down a little bit, and you try to figure out what, why did they go down, you know? Sometimes it's hard not to take some of those things personally as a leadership team. So we started to implement new procedures this year to make sure the teachers realize the things that we do as a team to address some of those questions. Two years ago, we kind of walked the staff through, these are the activities we've done throughout the year to help make sure we've met some of these questions. It was a little bit different last year with COVID. We weren't able to do that as, as well, because we didn't meet as a group. We had to do things virtually. But we found that to be really helpful to start going through some of those questions and linking them. The example I gave you was the professional development. So we really looked at what they did in August to make sure it was valuable to them, and that they're using that throughout their planning and every day.
I think the example, and I chuckled earlier in the presentation with Tracy, we've been providing Common Prep for more than 10 years. And one of the questions, and I'm going to paraphrase here, says, "My administration gives me time to collaborate with my fellow teachers in my department," something to that effect. And I think that should be a home run, because I can tell you from a scheduling standpoint, there's nothing that binds up the schedule more than Common Prep time. And, and I think my colleagues agree. So it was, it is very frustrating, because you know what you're doing, and you're providing that time, and you're providing other times, and you think that's going to be my highest score, and it's not my highest score. It's maybe a little bit above average. So just really spending the time to educate the staff to make sure they understand the significance of that opportunity and what it costs us. But in the end, I, I believe that that time is valuable, and I believe it's needed. And I see it in action when I'm walking around, and I see the departments all in a room talking curriculum, or talking instructional strategies. It's so worthwhile, but I just, it's sometimes it's just a little frustrating, but I'll get over it.
It's an interesting point you're making, and I understand. But I was thinking more about student results.
Go ahead, Tiffany, because I have a lot to say about this.
I was just going to say, interestingly enough, this happened, Mr. Swett, just last week, I believe, in our, we were talking, Dr. Schwam and the department chairs, and we noticed a difference in testing from the NUIA to the DRA. So NUIA is our literacy assessment that we're using. It's, it's pretty profound. It gives you data right away. The oral reading fluency allows you to record voice. It's really amazing. But in the foundational skills, we noticed that they score pretty high, our students. Yet their DRA, when you have the child in front of you, the DRA scores are lower. So we are seeing some differences between the testing. And so today, so we were just having this conversation, and we were saying that the DRAs are live for us, for the child in front of you. So you're really taking real data. And the assessor is really able to, because of the live student in front of them, to take those good qualitative notes on that child to get a very valid assessment, compared to some of the computerized, where they're giving you a lot of colors, a lot of numbers. But having a child in front of you, boy, you can really make a great qualitative assessment and learn a lot from children. And I think that's where Tracy's working with the project-based assessments, to really look at how children are performing, observationally, speaking. And I mean...
Just a quick point, but I do want to hear what you have to say, Tracy.
Yeah.
I hear you, and it makes perfect sense what you're saying, and it's exactly the question I was asking, is what you're answering. The flip side of that is, obviously, there's a degree of subjectivity involved versus objectivity. That's, that's the flip side of the argument.
Correct.
And which makes it really difficult to reconcile. So...
And I, I think it happens all the time in education. And I think, as a teacher, we may go in with a lesson plan. I remember being like, this is like my best lesson plan I've ever planned. And I do it, and the kids hate it. Right? Like, and I, I mean, that happens all the time. We come up with these great ideas, MCAS scores went up, awesome. We do it next year, MCAS scores went down. It's just a different group of kids. I mean, that's why we're constantly looking at the data. We're constantly talking. There's, you know, things that tend to work great, and they're, and sometimes it doesn't last. It just depends.
Yeah, I, I hear your frustration. I can't, since I'm not an educator, certainly not a professional educator, I can't empathize as much as I probably should empathize with your frustration. But I understand it, at least. I saw a headline in the New York Times, "California Has Decided to Stop Teaching Calculus." Why? Because they didn't like the results they got. And the, and they also decided at the same time to say, there shouldn't be any gifted programs, that the students aren't gifted, you know, the individual student isn't gifted. And I, it just blew me away that this was a, quote, "solution to a problem", which I see you shaking your heads, and I admire the fact that you're shaking your heads, because I think it's, and of course, California's getting a lot of backlash as a result of this. But...
Yeah, we do this with education all the time. We're going to do whole group reading. No, we're not. We're going to do phonics-based reading. Well, we're going to do a blend of it. But, yeah, we do this with education all the time. We're going to do a whole group reading. No, we're not. We're going to do phonics-based reading. Well, we're going to do a blend of it. And then we go back around. Being in education 30 times, you've seen the same thing. It's just label it something different.
So I have a, a really hundred-thousand-foot question that has occurred to me, maybe because I've been around a long time. I believe, and to, to something that Mr. Palladino said earlier today. That, that we probably have one of the finest evaluation systems in the state. And, and I say that not only the finest, but perhaps because, part of the reason I think it's the finest is I think it's probably the most constructive. Which is to say, the teachers actually feel it has value. And which, and I loved, someone talked about the peer. How long have we been doing that, though, by the way? Mel Lazarus would love to hear that.
What do you, I'll text him on the way home. Probably six or seven years now.
Really?
Yes.
Doesn't surprise me that it's very, very popular, but it's another example of, of how we have really hit the mark with our evaluation system. But my question to all of you is, have you ever been, gone out of a classroom having done an observation and said? Wow, that's, that's great teaching. You know, I would love to have my kids in that classroom, et cetera, et cetera. And then you look at the results and you say. How is it that kids aren't learning from that fabulous teacher? And how do you, how do you reconcile that?
It happens.
Why does it happen? Because we're taught not to blame children, right?
No.
The better question is, what, how are you measuring that? With what?
Which is why I asked my first question, which is, you've got a whole bunch of different measurements. And they sometimes don't, are irreconcilable.
That's the beauty of it.
One test.
You call that a beauty?
Well, yes, because what happens then is you have enough information. To be able to make really good decisions based on even sometimes conflicting data. If you just acted on that one piece of data based on that information. And you went about doing what you're doing with that one piece of data. And you missed this other important area of data that should have been paid attention to. You may start on the completely wrong path. So having these options and this way to sort of think about what we're actually doing. And how it's working with multiple measures, not just one measure, gives us a, a way to do better.
And not just, and not just multiple, but historical.
Correct.
So if we have that and we have a teacher, you know, who may be an exemplary teacher and their MCAS scores weren't great. If it happens one year, oh, it might just be that year, right? But if it happens consistently, we don't just look at that year, we're looking at historical data. Then that needs to be, um, a conversation had.
That's a very fair point. Historical, you know, just, yes, you shouldn't look at any one person based on one small set of data.
Just like your observation, you walk out of there and say, wow. You know, you can't assume it's wow every time. You've got to see that historically.
Except the beauty of your evaluation system is you're looking at teachers, what?
Multiple times.
That is true.
Twelve times.
Or more.
So to the contrary, when you walk out shaking your head, you can't have an assumption. You've got to go back and see if it's a pattern. Just opposite end of that.
All good. But I think, Andrew, you're the only person who would call that a beautiful thing, that you have difficulty reconciling it. But my final question before the chair gets mad at me. I never thought I would hear an educator I respect say. And I'm paraphrasing, I guess, but the key word you used was relevance. You are actually concerned about public education.
I am.
Being relevant.
I am.
Could you elaborate on that, please?
You really want me to?
Yes, I really want you to.
So, um, I read an article recently out of Harvard Business about adaptable leadership. And it was discussing the difference between technical leadership, the technical problems that we address, and the adaptable problems that we address. And how to actually solve those problems. And you have to look at them, first you have to identify which kind of a problem it is. Then you have to look at how to solve that. Adaptable problems take a very long time because it means that the system has to change. So it mentioned the American automobile industry and saying that they were warned. Over and over, over decades of time, that fuel prices were going to rise. That fuel would, would not be readily available, that there were going to be issues. And they didn't pay any attention to it and they kept building the same automobile. And they crashed, their whole system crashed. My sentiment is, public education, and I'm not just talking about Wareham, I'm talking about the system, has been warned. We have no child left behind, race to the top. Every Student Succeed Act, MCAS testing, charter schools, so on and so on, okay? And so essentially, what I believe, there's a, there's a segment of people that would like to privatize public education because there's a lot of money in it. And we spend a lot of money in public education. So my feeling is that if we don't take a serious look at what we're doing and how we're practicing it. And make it relevant for our students in the 21st century to be able to actually succeed effectively. Outside of public education, then we're just setting ourselves up. Because it is possible that in time, maybe not in my lifetime, but in time, we will lose relevance. And we are the only institution. Available anywhere in the world, I would argue, that actually allows us to truly be democratic. Because we offer free education to every single person for a very long time of their life. No other country does that, not, not to the extent. So we can't, if we want to maintain our democracy, we need to maintain the system. And we need to do a better job. I mean, we, the big we. So that's my sentiment on that. I apologize.
Why on earth are you apologizing?
Well, because it's sort of, you know.
April did it. Are you all set?
No, but I'll.
No, no, no.
You said that was your last question.
I know, but I, I got a response that is so wonderfully provocative, but I will save it for a glass of wine.
April, go ahead.
So the timing of this presentation was, was really perfect because last week was the, the joint. Conference between MASC and MASSS. And one of the workshops that I attended was creating consistency and cohesion across your district. And it was presented by Niask. And it was about, you know, this very idea, this, this whole district plan for five years. And what the vision of the graduate looks like. So my question is, the way that they were phrasing it is to have it be. A school district instead of a district of schools, which a lot of places are. Um, where each school has its own goals and its own identities. Where you guys are all working together in like this more unified space. So when you say the vision of the graduate, and we all have the vision of what we want to put out in the world as a product of. What most people will most recently equate it with is the high school. That's just, you graduate from high school and that's where, you know, most people are probably going to look at the vision of the graduate. So when you have that picture of the vision of the graduate. How is that vision, like, what does that look like in, in your case, like eight to 12? What does that look like at the middle school? What does that look like at the elementary school? On a district-wide level to bring that vision of that person that we're sending off into the universe representing. What we made as a Wareham Public Schools student? Like, what does that look like as a, as a bigger picture with all of you guys involved?
I, I think the big thing is, it's, it's the vision of the graduate. It doesn't necessarily mean graduate of the high school. It's a graduate of that grade level, graduate of that class. So it obviously is going to look a lot different for Beth and Joan than it would be for Tracy and myself. And I think that's the important piece. And to your point, um, you know, they're really pushing for, for the right reason, obviously. To have a kind of that pre-K through 12 continuum of that vision of the grad. So again, it's going to look a little bit different in each of our, our departments as far as, but the language is kind of there. But what we're looking for is kind of that definition of what it means for high school. What does it mean for middle school? And that's kind of the, when I talked about, you know, the vision of the grad. We kind of have the promise of the grad that we created through the strategic group. So now we need to take that a step further and break it down. What does it mean for the high school specifically? And that's kind of the next steps that we'll be working on in the spring.
If you look in your packet also, we developed those if and then statements. If we do this, then we promise to do that. Um, so I think that goes through all of our levels. And for each of the different priorities that we were a part of. We had members from, you know, pre-K all the way up to 12. So we talked about that and how that would reflect in that. Um, and that's how we came up with priorities and promises.
Great, thank you. And, and one more, just a quick point to Andrea's passion when it comes to what was said. There was another luncheon presentation by a UMass, or former UMass professor. About dark money and the privatization of public schools. And it was, it was very interesting to hear that. There are so many issues going on that we just don't even, I was completely ignorant to it. And was luckily to be one of 25 to be given a book by the author of this, um, this. So I can't wait to kind of educate myself more about it because public school, I'm a huge proponent of the public school. And I think we have an amazing district. And I hope that we can continue to, you know, learn from our challenges and, and embrace our strengths. And just make all of our kids feel as, as welcome and as included as they are at every level. So thank you, because this plan took a lot of work and a lot of planning and a lot of heart you can see in it. So thank you.
So I would just start by saying again, thank you to, for all the work that was done. Um, it's really to sit here and see all of you and see how well you work together and see, you know, how. So we're really, like April said, we're really fortunate and just seeing you all working here together demonstrates that. As far as the plan, I would just go back to some of the points that Kevin made. I, just, just me, I look for measures, right? So how we know if this is working? And so that's, when you spoke about the plan, you included more of that and what, and when you, when you spoke than what was, was written. So that was really helpful. Um, so it will be helpful maybe to change the timing a little bit. But my question is, so I always go back to last year, right? So, and I know that last year was a crazy year. But I don't know if this question is for Andrea or there were goals set out last year, just like there are goals set out tonight. But we, last year, we were kind of updated on how the previous year's goals. Where we were at with those, but this year we weren't. Right? Am I right? Did I miss it? So when we did the, um, back, was it in June, we did the school, the strategic plan, the five-year plan, we approved that. And at that time, we talked about detail and, and at that time, we talked about it would be at this meeting that we would hear more about that detail. Certainly, there, yeah, it could be me. I, but I, so I guess what I'm saying is, I was looking. To not only look forward, but to look back and see how we did on the goals that we set out last year. Do we not, I mean, that's the part of the school improvement plan, right? Is to assess where we, where we are and then where we're going forward.
I don't know if we ever did that or not, but I have them, so I can certainly share that with you. So at the end of the year, my team always writes everything that we, and it's very detailed. And I have it.
Yeah, well, no, like I said, I went back to last year because I was downing myself. See, and I know that was part of the presentation, so that's why I was kind of looking for that this year, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it would be helpful to have measurable, specific things. And again, I know you have them.
Yeah.
They're not always.
And I think we called it our evidence when we do our school improvement and we show the evidence of what.
Correct.
Yeah.
We review the year before's and then, and then we go forward with the new year.
We certainly have a lot of evidence from last year about creativity and. Creating non-traditional public school system access.
Like I said, last year was just such a.
Got through it.
Yeah, yeah, you did.
It's based on the old plan.
Well, right.
It was the end of, it was the end of WPS 2021. And we built this new plan in.
Well, right, but it was, we still can't just say, act like the year didn't happen.
No, and it, and all the data was from last year. In those packets, it's analyzed to create the goals this year. It's data from last year. It's not data from this year.
Well, that's true, but we still didn't, we still set out a, a group of goals, each school. You, you worked hard on that last year, setting out what you were going to do. But we didn't get to see the progress towards those goals.
Alright, so we'll do another presentation if you.
Well, no, you don't have to do it. We're just going forward.
Well, that will just follow the same pattern it always did.
Okay.
Going forward, so we'll look at what we did last, these goals at the beginning of the presentation and present our new goals. Uh, then.
Okay.
Last year was a disaster.
Yeah, well, so, I mean, I wouldn't, I'm not going to use that word, but yeah.
Yeah, there were a lot of learning. Um, I thought last year, although, you know, it was very difficult and we really leaned on each other, the four of us in the district administration to. Get through. I have to say, at, at points of evidence there is that we learned a tremendous amount. I think, and I got feedback from teachers about their learning curve of teaching through technology, teaching through. Um, a computer screen and trying to gain attention through all of these very creative mechanisms. To get through to our students the best way they know how.
Right.
And from there, we created a lot of dynamic moments and learned from it. Like Scott said about professional development, stu, teachers have the opportunity now that they never had before. Of going to virtual California for a PD, and I don't think that that will change now.
I like Tracy's example she gave of the forced-fed Google Classroom implementation. Uh, we, we, we had some people that were kind of dipping their toes in and they got pushed right in. So I thought, you know, there were a lot of positives that I'm sure you'll hear. Uh, you know, there were a lot of negatives as well, but I think as a group, we really did a great job of providing the best experience for our students. And make no mistake about it, we had a huge head start being one-on-one and we were blessed that Dr. Shaverhood implemented that. And Andrea behind the scenes with all the curriculum, modern teacher, everything that, like, it was, we made the best of it. And I can't tell you, and I'm sure I wasn't alone, the number of emails and phone calls we received from parents. Thanking us and, and talking about what they've heard from their colleagues that they're doing in other districts. And they were just, when they talked about Wareham, people were just very impressed with what was going on, under the circumstances, of course. But I, I think we did a really stellar job at doing the best we could for our students.
I wasn't implying anything.
No, no, I know you weren't. No, no, no.
So, but with that said, there is data in our packet that indicates that, you know, there are students who struggled through last year. And now are going to require, um, more, you know, to catch up and, and succeed.
Summer school was packed as a result and, you know, the remed, you're right on point, Joyce. The remediation that is going on in all of our schools is huge and it continues to go on. We, we obviously lost some ground, as all schools did.
Well, right, but we're not talking about that. So, and then I, I, you know, admire a positive outlook. I, I really, really do. But at the same time, we have to acknowledge where we're at, right? So, so.
And where we continue to be at, because let's not forget, we're still quarantining.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? And we're still at a loss for, for days in school. And, and so the impact of it, although we're in person, we are going to feel for, for years to come.
Right, and I am certainly not trying to shed a negative light. I'm really not. One of my least favorite sayings is, it is what it is. But this is a case of that, right? So, yeah, you know, and we have to move forward from here, and obviously you have a great plan to do that. But, you know, like I said, there is a lot of data that was included in our packet that we're not shining a light on that does indicate that. So I guess I was hoping to hear tonight more about what we're doing for those students. So I guess I'm just looking for you, for acknowledgement that, you know, that is the case and there's a plan for that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. All right, and so just one more thing I said, and I thought, Andrea, when you were talking about family engagement, right? So that's something that we've always kind of gone back to and, you know, struggled with how to make it happen. So Scott will tell you that I've been talking to him about this for years and years and years. And no, it's not the sign out front. It's not the sign out front.
Website?
That's one thing.
She's got two we talk about every month.
It's the calendar. It's the calendar.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, she has three.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the second one then?
I'll tell you, I'll tell them, I'll tell them outside.
All right.
And I'll tell you at the next school council.
All right, no, it's a calendar, so I've struggled with this on, you know, on the website for years and years and years. And apparently, you know, it's, it's not easy, but if you, if we want people to be engaged and know what's happening. And we do a great job on social media. You have people in all your schools and, you know, your principals. Joan, you do a great job with reaching out to parents on. Joan, you do a great job with reaching out to parents on social media. But if there was just a calendar, that centralized calendar. I've said this to Dr. Shaverhood too.
I'll find out what other, I'll find out what other schools in the conference use, because I know we've talked about it. I'll see what's out there that they're using for a program.
You know, I mean, and parents, we're all parents, you know, and we...
I email my parents every single Friday.
And do you get good feedback from that?
No.
You don't?
Every single Friday.
It goes out to everyone?
Every single parent gets an email from me, every newsletter. It has the dates, I'll send them to you, of everything that's going on for the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Actually, I get more complaints than I get positive feedback. You're always sending me stuff through Power School.
Really?
Yep.
All right, well, I take it back there. I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying, I do that every week for the parents. Sometimes it's overwhelming.
Oh, no, don't stop.
Sometimes it's overwhelming to get a monthly one. I know the elementary schools do that, but I just thought, all right, a teacher had that idea a couple of years ago and I'm like, sure, I'll do it.
If you want to get a complex, read the report from when you send out your Global Connects and how many people hang up on the first few seconds. You'll never want to send another one out again. I read that report the first couple of years as principal and I said, "I don't want it anymore." I don't want to read it. It was amazing. So, then I had my secretary use her voice and I won't, I thought maybe they'd listen to her because she's nice, but...
But we certainly need to come up with something because even our PTA, I mean, we just don't have... We're remote now with our PTA, so I thought we would have more parents because it's difficult to leave your young kids at home.
Right, I would think so too.
But we still don't have, you know, the participation that we would like to have.
I have a lot of family engagement, but not the youngest of it.
How do you, so if a parent, especially at the lower grade, so if parents really want to help out, are you able, are they able to help in some way?
Yeah, they join, if they can join the PTA, they can speak with me. I'm sure there's always creative ways to make my mic not...
Excuse me. They, our parents, yes, they volunteer in their own ways within the, not within the classrooms, but within the communication of the teacher. Our teachers do a fabulous job of using the Remind app or ClassDojo and really communicate to the parents what's going on. And I feel like our families are very connected through the teachers and through myself. And I just hosted a very fun and vivacious pumpkin story walk, which was really cool.
Yes, I saw some of that, yes.
So, I feel like we do have a lot of, I don't know, I still feel like we have a really good connection. I look forward to when the schools are open again and we can really get the parent volunteers back and continue to host really great events.
Okay. All right, so then, I guess, just going forward. So, well, let me ask the other school committee members, how do you feel about that? How do you feel about the measurements and the, does anyone agree with that? Does anyone?
I agree.
Okay. So, then, maybe going forward, Dr. Schwam, maybe more than once a year, we'll have, you know, a mini-update on... Would that be okay?
Yes, I think the principals were very grateful for the one meeting, oh, one time, because I think...
Well, it doesn't have to be so, you know, we can pick areas or, yeah, I'm not asking for you to do this presentation four times a year.
Yeah, but it might be nice to maybe go through each of the priorities.
Yeah.
Or each of the promises and maybe have a meeting, a quick meeting on how are we doing with scholarship student learning? Or how are we doing with professional learning or whatever the case may be.
Right.
But, yeah, so obviously, we want to do a meticulous presentation as much as possible. And we work really hard to make sure that that happens regardless.
Oh, I would appreciate that.
So, if it's shorter, that would be fantastic, I think, on everybody's part. But if you want evidence of the goals, it's longer. If you want them all, you know, if you want the big presentation with all of the evidence and everything collected and the analysis of that and all of that, it'll just depend on what it is you're looking for.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate it. So, next on the agenda is the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. I would like the committee to please vote approval on the payroll week and the bill warrants that are listed in your newsletter.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. April?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
A four-zero-zero.
Thank you. Next, we have MSBA. We received notice on October 27th that MSBA was inviting the district into the accelerated repair program for the middle school roof and the high school boilers. By February 25th, we have to have some information submitted to MSBA, our capital plan, our maintenance plan, and an initial compliance certificate, which is, I included in your packet just so you could see. Along with that, what I'm asking for tonight is just an approval of the committee to move forward and to work with the town administrator into pursuing and hopefully being admitted into the MSBA accelerated repair program. And I say hopefully be admitted because once you get this invitation, it's not an automatic admittance in. We have to do some things and we have to have a plan developed and then they will vote to admit us. At this point, as you know, we received reimbursement back for our elementary build. We do not know what the reimbursement rate would, will be for these projects, but I would anticipate it would be rather similar to what the reimbursement rate is for the elementary program. Certainly, without any doubt, we are in dire need of a middle school roof and our high school boilers. So, this is something that we were very grateful and very happy to receive admittance into this first round. And if it's, would be the committee's wishes that we could pursue this, I would appreciate it. And while I'm not asking for an actual vote, what I would like is just your approval to move forward.
So, it is a vote, though?
Well, yes, kind of, yeah.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, Jeff?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, four-zero-zero.
Thank you very much. Not listed on here, but I will have it on the next school committee meeting for a vote because I'm asking for a calendar adjustment for the elementary school. As you know, we're going to be moving into the new building and start our classes on January 3rd. In order to do that, we have to pack classrooms, we have to pack other materials at the elementary and get ready to move. We also then have to unpack and get ready to welcome our students into the new facility. One thing that our teachers agree upon 100% is when our students enter the building, we want it to look like home. We want it to look like we never left and that they are just picking up where they, when they walked out on the last day before the vacation, and here we go. So, for us to do that, we're going to be asking for the committee to make a minor adjustment in the elementary calendar and do two early dismissal days for our elementary students. One right now would be December 7th and the other one would be December 15th. By doing this, it would allow our teachers time to pack and get ready, and then it would also allow them some time to unpack. So, just the reason for this request that will be coming to you at the next meeting, and if you have questions, please let me know and I'd be happy to get you some more information.
Okay.
Do you want me to move on into...
Okay, yeah, to the next, yeah.
So, next, I am asking the committee to please increase the pay rate for substitute cafeteria workers to $15 an hour. It's currently $1,350. The reason why, we are having a great deal of difficulty finding cafeteria subs. Actually, we have one sub and that's all we have. We cannot get anyone else to work. By doing this, we anticipate it could raise the cafeteria budget $50 a month. That would be the impact. As you know, cafeteria is funded out of their own funding pot of money and it does not touch the LEA. So, at this time, I would ask the committee to please vote to raise substitute pay to $15 an hour.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Does this create any compression issues?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Kevin, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay. Roll call, Jeff?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Four-zero-zero.
Thank you. Next, we have a nurse appointment that I would ask your approval. We put the resume in the packet for your review. Jason Costa. This is a gentleman that will be working with a student that we have in our district that needs medical help, medical one-on-one. So, I would ask that you please approve the nurse appointment.
I guess I thought that I had read somewhere that it was a district-wide position, so it's not...
Well...
He would cover district-wide, so this is not that.
We have a couple, yeah, we have some needs.
Okay, all right. All right, I'm sorry, so did you both?
We both said so moved, so I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Four-zero-zero.
Thank you. Next, you have a list of obsolete furniture. I would ask you to please vote the obsolete furniture approval.
Okay, so we heard earlier today about the Chromebooks perhaps having some value. So, is that, is there one group of Chromebooks on here?
Yes.
Oh, no, there's 973 Chromebooks, okay. So, would they all be eligible to be? I use the word salvage. I don't know, I'm looking at Bonnie. Reconditioned and...
Yes, we'll get the expert.
So, I can't proceed until it's been marked obsolete. Okay. So, the process is that once you deem it obsolete, there's a company that we're working with. And then they look at, and it's ready to go tomorrow to her. They look at the models, the versions, the makers, and she'll tell me which ones that they can use. Okay. If they can use them, then they send us a box to send it back. And everything else, we have a company that comes, picks it up at no charge and recycles all of the electronic equipment. Oh, okay.
It's not necessarily a question for you, but about the obsolete process in general. I know that on many of our, you know, meetings, we have a list of things to deem obsolete and I know that once we approve that, they can be salvaged. Is there a way to get an update on what we've been able to recoup as a district from those salvageable items that don't get necessarily donated, but that we are able to recoup expenses from?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do see on this, so this list from DECA, it does say it's all in poor condition.
Yes.
Okay.
Most everything that we deem obsolete is in extremely poor condition.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
So, question?
Sure.
All this DECA material, you're not going to need any of this on a temporary basis?
Nothing on this list.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, this isn't necessarily a list of everything at DECA?
No.
Okay. Just looking forward, yeah. Okay. Roll call, Kevin?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Yes.
So, myself, yes. Four-zero-zero.
Thank you. And just so you know, you know, we're working very hard to take care of the furniture, equipment, and DECA. And what we've started doing is inviting our schools in to look at what they can use. And they have dots that they will put on. Mr. Palladino was so busy today with his blue dots, he ran out. But, you know, we have a plan and that we certainly are going to shift things over to take care of other needs in the buildings. Once that's done, we'll invite the town departments in to look at what we have. And then after that, we'll invite other area, like the Y or other preschools, et cetera, in to see. Jeff makes a good point that we know our cafeteria tables are going to be needed at the new school, so we will be keeping them at least through March.
And when you say needed, it's because of the delay in the furniture?
Correct. Correct, yeah.
Okay. Well, that's great. That's great to hear. So, that's a similar process that you used when mine it?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Oh, I would share one other thing. Because we have such, so many desks and chairs at DECA that really, they're old, nobody really wants them. So, I've worked, I'm working with our project managers because there's third-world countries that will take them from us if we can help put them in a container. And so, we're seeing what that cost would be. But if we can help another school out, we would love to do that. So, that's another project that we're working on.
Okay, great. Okay, we'll move to the report of the school committee. We have in the packet a list of meeting dates that had previously, it says current schedule on the top, and then a list of new dates. So, because of this room being used for other meetings, we've had to make some changes to some meeting dates. So, those are listed on here. And in a couple of cases, the location of the meeting has also been changed in order to accommodate. And there's one on here, there's one change that's not on here and it's the meeting on December 16th. So, the December 16th is a Thursday. It's the night of our vote on the budget. And we're proposing to move that meeting to December 15th, the night before, it's a Wednesday. And that meeting would be moved to the middle school because we're not able to meet in this room. Does anyone have any questions? So, I guess I'll take a motion to approve this new meeting date list, again with the change from December 16th to December 15th.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Jeff?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Next is a vote on an amendment to the superintendent's contract that we, the committee discussed a couple of weeks ago. So, this is the vote on that. It's just regarding the date of the evaluation. Does anyone have any questions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Kevin?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Four-zero-zero. Thank you. And I guess that's it, unless anyone else has any other business? Jeff?
So, I just received today a legal opinion as a result of attending the mass conference because I literally asked this question of the entire room and I had an attorney come up to me and say, "I'll send you the results." And the question was, does the OSHA requirement that employers of 100 or more people either have their staff vaccinated or test on a weekly basis, does that OSHA requirement apply to public schools? And when I did my... own initial review, it appeared the answer was no. But of course, it's not that simple. So, I will read you the short paragraph that I got that represents a quote, "legal opinion." This, and it's specifically, this OSHA thing specifically is called a emergency temporary standard. So, if you hear something called an emergency temporary standard, that's what this OSHA rule is. It applies to private employers with 100 or more employees. OSHA does not apply directly to public employers in Massachusetts because Massachusetts does not have an OSHA-approved state plan. However, Massachusetts law requires that public employers provide protections for all employees consistent with OSHA's standards, specifically, and then it cites a legal reference. Incorporate standards promulgated under OSHA's general duty clause, such as ETS, which is the emergency standard. Pursuant to the statute and implementing regulations, public employers with 100 or more employees may also be required to comply with this standard. The Massachusetts Department of Labor Standards is anticipated to provide further guidance regarding the applicability of the standard to public employers. So, that's a lot of legal gobbledygook, but basically it means, "Stay tuned." So, my question for Andrea is, Andrea was doing me a favor because she has this relationship with Test and Stay, I forget the corporation name, and because the Y, where I serve on the Board of Directors, is an employer of more than 100 and will have to comply as of January 4th, assuming the courts don't intervene. But there is a difference between testing on a weekly basis under this OSHA standard and the Test and Stay program that is for people who are exposed. So, Mike, and if I'm reading you correctly, if I read correctly your responses to me, the Test and Stay program for exposures of our staff and students is free. Is it fair to say, however, that if we were to test every employee who is not vaccinated on a weekly basis, that is not what Test and Stay does and that would not be free?
I have to, I have a, actually, the Department of Education has been pretty ambiguous in answering a lot of these questions definitively.
Of course.
I do have a webinar that I'm attending on Friday to learn more about the regulations or the expectations around Test and Stay. There are issue with supplying of the test at the moment. There seem to be not, they don't have enough of the Bionex, I guess, from what I gather, the information I received today. We have enough at the moment, but the state is struggling. And so, they're putting limitations around, like, and the elevation health group is giving different answers than the Department of Education is giving when we have certain questions. And so, it's very frustrating to try to plan something that you think will be beneficial for everyone, but you don't have the correct answer from anyone directly. So, I will attend this webinar. I have forwarded the communication from the health group to the Department of Education that we've had, so they're aware that this is the information that I've been given. And no one's in danger. It has not put anybody at risk. I mean, it's been all done on the up and up, as far as our students are concerned. But it's, when do you call it, when do you say it's exposure at the school and who's going to pay for it? Do you include the bus stop? Do you include aftercare? Do you include, I mean, there are a million different questions, right? School-sponsored activities. No one can answer those questions for me definitively, or they're answering them counter to one another. So, it becomes very difficult. But Friday, I will have more information and be able to be helpful, hopefully.
Yeah. They, I reached out on behalf of the Y to the Test and Stay people and they ignored me.
Except, interestingly, the person at DESI, who's in charge, is now trying to formulate an agreement with them. I just received an email today from him because I explained our situation to him. It was not a lot of kids either, you know, relatively speaking. And so, he indicated that he's working with EEC to try to come up with people who provide that service under the guise of EEC, that there's an agreement with Test and Stay. So, there you go.
And we had a scheduled to have them at our meeting that got canceled during the storm.
Probably better that they're not, actually, because there's too much ambiguity.
Yeah. Okay, all right, good.
Honestly.
Okay.
I think it would just confuse, you know, at first, we kind of thought we had it all together, but then a situation comes up that we don't have an answer to. And we try to make logical decisions based on what our kids need always, right? First and foremost, it's our students. And, you know, you have conflicting answers to those questions. Gratefully, we have great staff. We have great principals. We have great people who are working to help. And the elevation health people were very nice. And the parents were delightful. So, there were a lot of positives, but the issue is, what are the rules? Give me the rules and we'll follow the rules. I may push back on some of them with questions, but we'll follow them. We just need to know what they are. Okay.
It's a-
To be continued.
Yeah, to be continued. But it's a serious issue because if we're required to do it and we have to pay for it and it's expensive, then it's a budget buster. But the alternative is charging the employees and that busts their budget. So, this is a very difficult issue. Enough said.
Okay. All right. So, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Good night.